I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the presence of the legions.
The public. We have a serious regard for the Republic, which is standing one nation under God, in its role with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, for those who have passed away in our community, and of course, the horrific incident that happened in Israel and the lives lost there, especially the 11 Americans that lost their life. Thank you. Also, I'd like to announce that Mr. King won't be here tonight. He's having a medical procedure. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smell?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. King.
There'll be a motion this evening to move item 5B to Sixth and Seventh Order for a final vote. This ordinance is to extend the local declaration of emergency as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, for another seven days. Anyone who would like to speak on this piece of legislation may do so in Fourth Order during citizens' participation. Dispense with the meeting. The reading of the minutes, please.
Third Order 3A, correspondence received October 3rd, 2023 regarding cumulative licenses and permits report for January through August 2023. 3B, open gov August 2023 report for licenses and permits received October 3rd, 2023. 3C, code enforcement report for city council received October 3rd, 2023. 3D, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report 2022-2023 received October 4th, 2023. 3E, correspondence received from the City Business Administration on October 5th, 2023 regarding the city's payroll preparation tax collections.
Are there any comments on any of the Third Order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have two announcements. Thank you. So there's a couple of things going on in Green Ridge. First of all, this weekend, on Saturday, October 14th, there's going to be a fall festival up at Green Ridge Corners, and that's going to take place from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And also in Green Ridge, they are starting their hometown hero banners. And banners are going to be for sale October 22nd, October 29th, and November 5th if you'd like to honor your hero. And that's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Post Ice Cream Shop where you could order those banners. If you are ordering it for someone, then you need to provide their full name, rank, military branch, and if you have a printed photo available. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thanks. A while back, we received a donation from James Kuchwara of a flagpole for Naog Park. The flagpole has been erected, and there is a bench there now and some rock and stone and stuff put around there. So on this Saturday, October 14th, at 1:00 p.m., there was going to be a memorial service honoring James Kuchwara and all of our military. That is this Saturday at 1:00 p.m., and it's open to the public. That's all I have.
Anyone else? I'd like to announce that the Scranton DPW Workers Union will be having a truck-or-treat event. It's Sunday, October 29th, from 3:00 to 6:00. It's at the Scranton DPW parking lot on Poplar Street. There'll be trucks and heavy equipment on display, candy, live DJ, decorations, family fun. This is their second. Last year was at their first, and it was, they did a fantastic job. My grandson had a blast, so he's already looking forward to this. And that is all I have.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
Chris Fadden? No? Okay. Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. First, I would like to compliment the city workers, DPW, police, and firefighters for the running of the Steamtown Marathon. I think they did an exceptional job, considering, you know, the weather was a little against them, but it was well done. Speaking of firefighters, their contract was settled 189 days ago. Why isn't it on the website? The 120-day period for, you know, crossing the i's, dotting the i's and crossing the t's is long over.
We don't have that answer. I inquired myself. Mr. Boldenberg, would you circle around and inquire again? Or do you have an update that we haven't received yet?
No, I'll follow up with the law department, and they could follow up with Labor Council.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if we're still paying Mr. Offburg, I mean, we do one page a day or something, or whatever. Also, on the city's website, the delinquent refuse fee database, which is supposed to be updated quarterly, was last updated on May 31st. That means it should have been updated by August 31st. That's behind. And any news on the audit?
Just what we reported out last week. Mr. Boldenberg, did we get anything else?
Yeah, if you let me know when the sewer authorities' meeting, when and where, I'll go down there and I'll put the fear of God in them, because I can do that.
They are going to call an emergency meeting, and I will advise counsel and Ms. Hoda-Wanitz.
Thank you.
Good. Item 3E, the payroll preparation tax. I was looking at the numbers, and I understand that the collections come after the fact of the quarters and everything. But in 2022, they collected something like $2.5 million, and so far, we've collected about $1 million. Are we really on track, and it's just a lag in payments?
We can inquire about that also.
Okay. I suspect that's what it might be, but this is now the second full year, so it should be coming routine. So the number should be looking, I think, a little better than this. 5D, the high-fidelity audiovisual services. I saw two numbers quoted. The one on the city's paperwork, which said it was $23,389, and Mr. Borwick's paperwork says it's $24,599.84. Did we kind of argue them down, or which is the correct number?
We can inquire about that too, Mr. Boldenberg.
I will, sir.
For clarity's sake.
And 7B, the mental health mobile app for the firefighters. Anything that contributes to the health and welfare of city employees, I'm all in favor. But I have a couple of questions. One, if this is good enough for the firefighters, will we waltz one for the police? They also exposed to trauma. I understand the rationale was, you know, that sometimes, you know, city employees are so busy, they can't come forward and get the help they need, and this would help. But it seems to me that that argument would also apply to the police department, who would be exposed to trauma. But the one concern I was having was not so much the money that you were discussing in caucus, the $18,000, and $5 a month, $60 a year, whether it's used or not. That seemed a little dorky to me, that if nobody used it, we're still going to pay What I would not want to see is that this, they use this mobile app when they really need more professional help, and they fall under the radar. I think, you know, it's a good supplement, a supplementary approach, but it should not be a substitute for the professional help they may need, and I wouldn't want them, you know, to get second-rate care, that kind of thing. And also, I still am going to push for legislation to make the flood victims tax exempt for the property taxes. Commissioner Chirmac agrees at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoda-Wanitz. Next up, Mr. Mike Mancini.
Good evening. For the two of you who have yet to meet, my name is Mike Mancini. I'm a resident of the city of Scranton. Good evening, Councilman McCandrew. Good evening, Councilman Schuster. As the, as we turn into the future, we have a railway system that's going to be coming through here, in that so distant future. So transparency is very important with this body. I'm going to talk to you this evening, and I want to know where everybody stands, because the election is right around the corner. I'm going to talk to you about the sale of the Scranton Parking Authority, the Scranton Sewer Authority. Both of those were sold by a former mayor who is incarcerated. He said everything was above board. He said everything was correct, and he, in turn, disrupted things. He sold the biggest asset that the city of Scranton had for $195 million. $3.1 million went to several attorneys, 50 of them, 50 of them. 1.5% of that closing went towards attorneys. Let me tell you something. As a city solicitor, the question should have gone to the solicitor, Shrive. Then from there, all you had to do is question the title company and its buyer beware. It was up to the water company to either take the proposal or not take the proposal. Limerick Township, Montgomery County, sold the same type of sewer system that we had for $71.1 million. Two law firms, $200,000, okay? Three days before closing, on the sewer authority, he received a settlement statement. He did not notify this council, did not notify the taxpayers or the citizens of the city of Scranton, did not notify the Scranton Times or other types of news sources, kept it all private. Now he's incarcerated, and it's kicking the teeth knowing that I was the one that had the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, placed delinquent taxes for collection, okay? To be on the take for something like that is going beyond good taste and reason both. All you have to do this evening is send a letter to the mayor requesting the audit of the sewer authority and the parking authority, and let me tell you why. Five minutes in front of the former mayor at his town hall meeting back in May of 2017, there were some simple questions to him. He closed the parking authority and the sewer authority through the same law firm in Philadelphia to put $3,500 in his account for his reelection. It's a proven fact, he said himself, okay? He was on the take, he's in jail, and I'm asking this body today, each and every one of you. Transparency is very important in our government. Do the right thing this evening. There were people that sat here before you. Gary DiBilio, Commerford, Poshes, Mike Melnick, and Bob McGough, who actually determined their own future based upon what the citizens voted them in the office for. They drew their own conclusions, and they looked out for the citizens of the city of Scranton. I grew up in the city on West Elm Street, next to a gentleman by the name of Jim Decker. He had horses. He had horses. We had horses in the city at one time, and he used to bring us up and down the alley every single weekend. It's a lot different now, all right? We deserve better. We're as good as who we surround ourselves with. So I'm asking this body this evening, send a letter to the mayor requesting the audit of the city parking authority and the city sewer authority. The mayor snuck the parking authority through just to see if he could get the sewer authority through. And guess what? He accomplished this before everybody's eyes, and he did it on the take, and it's shameful. I'm a citizen of the city of Scranton. I love this city, and it's up to you guys to show your love for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mancini. Mr. Bob Ballas is next.
Evening, counsel. Bob Ballas, Scranton. First off, I would start off as like I'd see the city expedite the flood relief to the people that are damaged in this city without any reservations and playing games or waiting for this or waiting for that. They deserve immediate response without waiting for legislation or this or that to get the job done. The other part is, we have, as I brought up, we have the disinfectant wipes at Weston Field around one of my Ballas trailers, and they're also at the fire department in Clark Summit. The trailer is open in Weston Field. Help yourself, but don't be greedy. Don't try taking them out and selling them to anybody. Take what you need to use or help your neighbor and give them the wipes that are necessary for them. I'd like to see us restore the ambulance from the city back again. There's a tremendous amount of money to be made. They support themselves, and it'd be an asset back into this city. We used to have the fire ambulance here many, many years ago. These hospitals are all making a ton of money on it. We should share in it and put the ambulance back. We have excellent people here that could do the same job they are to get our people to the hospitals. The other thing is, I'd like to see the Bill Gahan mud pond up at Naog cleaned out and engineering done the right way by test pouring around, putting dye in, and find out where the dye leaks into the holes and seal it with gunite and put the pool back the way it should have been without spending all these millions and millions of dollars and filling people's pockets for no darn reason. The, I'd like to see the change Bill Gahan's Biden Street back to Spruce Street. As you can see, what we're getting right now, the negativity worldwide with Joe Biden running the country. And what's really concerning me is, he's going to put us in World War III. You know, the weapons that went to Ukraine, bullets, airplanes, tanks, remember, they're American-made. So if you get shot over there, you're getting shot with an American bullet. It doesn't mean a damn difference what uniform is shooting at, and we have no business doing what we're doing. Now, we're into other problems as we see in Israel. And what I would request tonight, out front, we fly two flags, the Israeli flag and the Ukraine flag. We took another group's flag and flew it for a month. We need to honor those that are being butchered and murdered right now for no darn reason. And we got to show our support, who we are as Americans, for what's happening over there. Okay? The other thing is, why are we allowing our country to keep doing what we're doing? We're in harm's way right now. We're already backing up Ukraine against Russia. We got North Korea to deal with next, and China. Where are we going to get hit next? And that's where Joe Biden's taking us, and people have to open up their eyes. I've spent a lot of time in the Middle East. I know the country very well. I know the people very well. And these butchers and savages that are out there right now could give a damn less about life. They, nothing scares them. They could care less. You could put a gun to their head, and they'll, "You go shoot me." They don't care. We got to start taking our people and take it seriously. But to honor those that have been murdered and butchered, I'd like to see those flags flying out there until this conflict is over. We owe it to them. We owe it to our citizens in this city that have made what we're doing. And you guys are the ones that could get it done. But let's change Biden Street back to Spruce Street and take Biden's name off, because we didn't agree to it. Bill Gahan and the rest of them decided that should happen. We didn't have a moratorium. We didn't have a referendum to put it on. We didn't get the right to vote. And I sure in hell don't care for Bill to see Gahan, or not Gahan, but Joe Biden doing what he's doing and keep talking about us in Scranton. We don't support him. I don't, and a lot of other people, and give us our rights back. Put it on a referendum this November, and let us vote whether we want it on that street again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballas. Next up, Mark Scorinci. I don't know if I pronounced it right. I hope I did.
Good evening, counsel. All right, so I'd like you to really look at this picture, and then I can describe what my feelings are. May I give it to the bailiff, and he can give it to you?
You can bring him up, sir.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. So I live on Mulberry Street, and I got there last May. And what it is, is that that gate is too close to the street. And when it's too close to the street, what happens is that there's that alarm, and that alarm goes up and the gate is up, and it will not stop until that gate comes down. And it just goes on and on and on, counsel, on and on and on. So it's very annoying, counsel, very annoying. So I'm asking you, do you think you can put that gate back 10 feet or 12 feet like it is on Linden Street? Whoever did it on Linden Street did it good. The contractor, in his infinite wisdom, on Mulberry Street, put it too close to the sidewalk. We cannot sleep, counsel. Let me tell you something. Those windows in that Mulberry Tower are like 49 years old. The other day, it was 38 degrees. You can feel the air coming through the window. If you could feel the air, you can feel the sound waves coming through that. And then you've got that building on one side and the building on the other, and it magnifies that sound. There's no, you wish you could put some sound cones or something. So I wrote something on there. If it's too much money to move that gate back like on Linden Street, can we at least disable the alarm for five seconds after the gate is up? Because half of the time, people are with their headphones and their earbuds. They don't hear that alarm. You know who hears that alarm? Mulberry Towers hears the alarm. There are people just waiting to die over there, like me, and we just want some peace and quiet in our last days on earth. So I'm asking you, counsel, do you think you could do something with that alarm so that we can rest comfortably until we have our final breath? That's it, counsel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Boldenberg, would you inquire or have? I don't know if that alarm is part of any code or anything like that, but have them take a look at that or inquire. Okay, thank you.
Privately owned, sir.
Thank you, counsel. God bless. Okay, that exhausts our list, but I'm sure there's more people who'd like to speak, so whoever would like to come up next.
I guess it's me tonight, Tom Coin-Menuka. Unfortunately, our gentleman here from Kaiser Avenue wasn't here tonight, the one who was asking about sandbags, because I had in my garage, these are fillable, they're almost like the water, water fillable tubes that are used for holding down pool covers. I bought a number of them beforehand because of runoff issues near my house where I was jumping over the curb. You fill them up with water and put them down, and when the water hits them, it hits up against a water barrier with plastic and just flows along. So I was hoping he was here so I could have given him those, because I'm not sure that he's gotten those sandbags that he needed yet. And I hope that he would be here or comes next week so I can give them to him so that maybe next time this happens, he can at least put something out there to protect the house. Now, for the pump house delays and debates on keeping the water out, we have heard about all the arguments about how much it's going to take to change it, to update it, to make it functional, to have engineers in there, how much we need to review it. And keeping the water out is kind of simple. There were evidence of early versions of the diving bell in 4th century B.C. by the Greek philosopher Aristotle. The first design for the diving bell was in 16th century, though Haley, who was of Haley's Comet, designed and constructed one functionally in late 17th century. That diving bell was constructed in 1691. It seems that if we can make a structure in 1691 that uses air to keep water from flowing up and flooding out a building, that the science of 1691 can be duplicated and implemented here to keep it from repeatedly happening again. I understand moving the electrical up to the roof or up top may be a problem, but if we can use air and water to keep it from ever getting to that electric and putting an air pump on the roof with power to it, that solves the issue while we figure out in 20 to 25 years how we might actually fix that pump house. Talking about corruption and things that get done in the back room. Is it possible to get an update on the OEC director who was driving under a suspended license and pled guilty to that? I understand it's a city employee. I'm not sure whether or not they were driving a city car, but driving under a suspended license for a director of the city of Scranton is something that should be at least addressed, because it's not ethical to decide that I'm going to go back and forth to work with a suspended, knowingly with a suspended license. Last week, and this has, and this has happened beforehand, because we all remember the gas cards and not being reported and being hidden and going on trips to New Jersey and putting them on gas cards on vehicles. There is a placebo of saying that it's for safety and not doxing of employees, that we can't give out the information of city cars that are owned and purchased by the city to the people, because they may actually watch what city employees are doing. Well, maybe after they drive with suspended licenses and they're using personal vehicles as their own play toys, there's a legitimate reason to watch what they're doing with these vehicles. Do we have any word on the pilots yet that are requested?
Yeah, I'll report out in fifth.
Okay. We're going to have a list of that provided so that we can see all the names who've been mailed out, too?
I have the list, but I'm requesting, or I did earlier, to put it in Third Order for next week, so you can all look at it.
So you can all look at it.
For eighth order, the overtime was introduced on June 6th of 2023. It's been 127 days since the overtime report has sat on eighth order for continuing input. Are we ever going to have input on this? And if not, what was the stumbling block that stopped the process in the first place? I understand it was supposedly an executive order because they needed more time, but 127 days is enough time to figure it out. Do we know why?
I do not. I was in favor of it, so.
I understand that.
I was also in favor, but I don't think we're going to be getting an answer, and I haven't been really waiting for that answer because I don't think it's coming.
I expect it'll die at the end of the year, but thank you very much.
I believe we can request an update on that, and Councilman King had previously given an update last month on it when we had come back from break, that they're in the process of getting, you know, company for, to be able to obtain the data.
They've been in process for 127 days in figuring out why they don't want to record overtime for employees and why they're doing it.
I understand. I agree. I'd like to see it done.
I think 127 days is more than enough time for the mayor's office to figure out a question.
Once again, request an update for it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, counsel. I'm Rick Little from Scranton. There needs to be some figuring out of the judicial branch of the government as it applies, well, certainly federally, but state, county, and city. And I've been spending a lot of time trying to figure out the Lackawanna County Judiciary. And I go to the magistrate court twice to get eviction, just summary eviction, and then it goes up to the Court of Common Pleas. And I've done all the due diligence I can there. Even the magistrate court over here on Washington, Judge Alice Hailstone Farrell's court says it's a court of no record. And then I go in front of Judge Moyle in the Lackawanna Court, and she's holding up a piece of paper, which is the complaint and the judgment. Yeah, that's a record. What we need is a record of how many people go through that court. I think it's hundreds, if not thousands. I court watched all I was allowed to do, and all the cases one day was Scranton Housing Authority versus, you know, a tenant there with the same bad legal representation. They act like there's legal representation from Lackawanna Pro Bono and Northeast Penn Legal. Anyway, it's not adequate. Most of these people are, you know, they're as old as I am, 70, 80. And I know many of them. They're down by the river. I think a basic conflict of interest in my looking into it is the legal representation for city council, Mr. Gallagher here, but his father is the legal representation for the Board of Commissioners, same law firm at 416 Jefferson Avenue. And I've been trying to get onto the Board of Commissioners for a long time because there's really no tenant representative, even though Carl Anott says there is with this guy Dave. I never heard anything about any tenant person, but they're just evicting people all the time. And I go to the clerk's office, the Lackawanna clerk, and they say, oh, you should go see Matt Cartwright. So it's just moving things around, moving people around. And it's also a big conflict of interest, I think, that Carl Anott, the new executive director of Scranton Housing Authority, he works also at, for 14 years, at the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office. And same with the prosecuting attorney, who I walk into this court, David Coyne, he's worked there 12 years. And it's just an atmosphere of fear and you're going to be evicted for this, you know, we don't need permission to come into your apartment. And none of these people know how to, I don't even know how, and I've had a lot of legal experience. There has to be a rep, a true tenant rep on the board of commissioners. Because they had no right to go to that court in the first place. Federal rules under 24 CFR, S.H.A., as a HUD landlord, they have a duty to prevent homelessness. They have a duty to seek funding for people that pay their rent. And all the stuff that I've witnessed under the American Rescue Act, a subset of that was ERAP, Emergency Rental Assist, it was put in charge of the area agency on aging, and then they privatized it out to Philadelphia. And now, you know, after coming back to court, oh, all the ERAP money is gone. Anyway, there has to be some sort of thing about the legal stuff happening in the city, the county, and up to the state and the federal.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Anybody else like to speak?
I told Marie, ladies first, but she said old age first. I'm a firm believer in that old adage that that was then and this is now. You know, what was good then might not be good now and vice versa. I noticed in last week's paper, a statement by one of the paper's employees, that's because I definitely don't consider them journalists, newspapermen, reporters. Anyway, it was, they mentioned Mr. Howes run for council. And they brought up some trivial, unnecessary remarks, as far as I'm concerned. John can put a sign up in my yard if he wants. You too, Jerry. More the merrier. Many years ago, I remember the paper referred over and over and over again to a murder victim as a prostitute. This was completely unnecessary, just like these remarks about Mr. Howe were. Well, enough, I guess. I'm not one for rumors, but I heard two interesting ones last week. One of them was that Biden's army of illegals is staying at the Montage, up at Montage at Hampton Inn. I know I certainly wouldn't, couldn't afford to stay there. And the other one, I heard a homeowner talked to a construction man who told him the property at Linkets Creek on Wells where the ballpark is was stated to be a water treatment plant. You know, if that's true, that's not very good news. Both of them had good sources too. That's why I don't know how true they are. And lastly, I was wondering if there was some way the code enforcement could interrupt their busy day and go down East Troop Street towards the railroad tracks and explain to me why a huge bulldozer is allowed to be parked in a residential neighborhood. Now there's pallets being left there. They go by, they go up Troop Street, which is West Troop, past the condemned house with the junk cars in front of it. For five years, they don't see nothing. So I guess asking them to do something about a bulldozer, they probably couldn't even find it. And I'd like to say, last week, Chumley and me walked around Na'od for, God, I guess, two hours. That includes the sitting time. And I was on the Upper Park, and it is such an improvement over a couple of years ago when I walked. And today, when I was at Western Park, there was two different city employees working, cleaning up and cutting grass. They have made such a big difference. So at Western Park, it's really a different place than it was four, five years ago. And whoever's responsible should be proud of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Mr. Volenberg, would you have code enforcement go over on East Troop and check out this bulldozer?
I will. I'll check out West Troop also.
Thank you very much.
Marie Schumacher. It was kind of him to say that he's older than I, but I've got him beat by a mile. Two things I'm really happy about are, number one, the lights that have been netted around the corner of Lackawanna Avenue and Wyoming Avenue for many months have finally been removed. And also, the Penn Avenue and Lackawanna Avenue is starting to shape up with a theater that works, so that's happy news. But I do have a bunch of questions. My first one, Tom already covered with the pilots. Second, why does DPW fail to remove signs, like there's one about, two, about seven feet tall and wide on East Mountain Road? And they all say, you know, work, road work ahead 500 feet. Well, the work has been done for months. I mean, literally months. And I called to 311 and asked that same question, and yet nothing happens. They just sit there. And then next, why do we still get reports with six-digit dollars of business privilege and mercantile tax when council replaced that with a payroll preparation tax several years ago? If you can do that in fifth order, I would appreciate it. Then, next question is, when the state right-to-know law allows five business days before response be provided to the requester, why does the city start out with 30 days? I mean, I'm sure in many cases, things that have been requested are probably sitting here, but you got to wait 30 days? Something's wrong with that. And again, on the DPW, I called three times today with several hours in between to ask a question, and every time it rang, did, put the 15 in to get to the right place, and the machine is all filled up. Something needs to be done there because maybe you guys know the answer. I get a lot of mail, and I like to recycle it. And what I wanted to know was, I'm running out of paper bags because everything's plastic anymore. So what should I put it in? I mean, I just would like to know, but I can't. So if you know the answer, I would appreciate it. Does anybody know what you put, I mean, just like mail in? Cardboard boxes don't do the thing.
Not sure, because if you put it in plastic, they're going to dump the mail and then leave the plastic bags. That's obvious, right? So maybe we can inquire about that because I don't know the answer unless someone sitting up here has the answer or the correct answer. We'll get it for you. I don't know.
I mean, it's, okay. Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Okay.
And then I do have a suggestion. You know, every lousy-looking corner, it seems, is a gas station, like Meadow Avenue and 307. And I don't know why, I think we should ask a former president of the council here, Mr. Donahue, to see that some of that gas tax money that is coming in and being transferred other places be used to get those tanks out of there, every one. I don't know, but if they could help use that money to get those tanks out of there and get those properties working again instead of pulling down the way the city looks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schumacher. Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, counsel. David Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Once again, my question on pension losses wasn't that, the whole enchilada lost money. It's that I'm concerned about volatile investments being subsidized, losses in those investments being subsidized by solid stocks and good investments. And finally, Mr. Bolus and I agree about something. We should definitely, before anything is done with the pools, especially replacement, we should look into viable repairs. And the grout thing is a solid idea. Utility bills, once again. Last month, for 35 days and 2,500 gallons, my bill is up to $177 or something like that. Two people, 2,500 gallons. I don't think that would have been more than 50, 60 bucks just a year or two ago. That's unacceptable. And why would that be? Well, we had a bunch of 501(c)(3)'s stick their nose in, bring in Henry Amoroso, paid him Henry Amoroso, and they walked away from it after that. We had one meeting, and we had a speaker in here. We had one conference on the sale of the sewer plant. And that sale, that conference was in the afternoon up at Marywood College. In looking for it, I got treated totally disrespect. In looking for it, I got treated totally disrespectfully. Treated like somebody that was just looking to hang around and look at the young attractive females or something. I wasn't even directed. I asked several times where, what building is the meeting? And nobody knew or cared. And then large amounts of money were offered for the sewer plant. Sounded like a good deal. But here we are, paying $175 or more for water in 35 days for 2,500 gallons. And that is strictly, I mean, there's no excuse for that at all. And once again, on this hump test, I would advise, one of the things that I find most disturbing about 501(c)(3)'s is that they seem to be very interested in politics and law. And to me, that's unacceptable. I don't need them assuming they're holier-than-thou. I don't need them assuming they're smarter than thou. They're good at what they do and they should stick to what they do. You want to save somebody's soul? Fine. Don't come up with a political opinion to run my life. And don't assume that you're, you know, everything about everything just because you're an educational institution. once again, we heard an awful lot about Joe Biden. And I mean, I wonder if they were embarrassed over the Iran-Contra affair where we're selling arms to both sides, Iraq and Iran? Who the hell should like us after to find out that we stuck them in the back with the knife? You know? So Saddam had his, his reason for being mad at us. And the Iranians didn't like us already. And it just goes on and on. I didn't favor Joe Biden's streak, but I thought a ceremonial idea on Joe Biden. And they didn't take that advice. And here we are hearing about it three years later. Thank you and have a good night. I had more to say on that, but I'm out of time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name's Pat LaFrance. I'm a resident of South Side. And I'm here basically to find out your opinion tonight whether I'm a homeowner or landlord. I lived on the 600 of Alder years ago, grew up on the 600 of Alder. And then after my wife was assaulted in front of my house, we moved within, within two months, we were gone. We moved up to the 1,000 of Maple, and that's where I'm at now. And the only reason we moved there is so my wife can be near her family. And when we looked at the house that we were in now, I said, Ben, a lot of work. Yeah, yeah, let's buy it. Bought the house 2005. About four years ago, I had some medical happen to me and I stopped working on my house. This year, we got a contractor come in and give us a price. And I started working on my house again, on myself because it's astronomical. I'm not looking to do any plumbing in my house. I'm not looking to do any electrical. I'm not looking to do any structural. In the beginning of June, I believe it was late May, I put in for a permit to put up some two-by-four walls in my bathroom, nothing structural, again. Fur out one wall. When I put that in for the permit, it was questioned by whoever the inspection department is now. It was questioned by them. Can homeowner do that type of work? And when I saw that on the question, I sent in the little sketch that I had of what I wanted to do up there. Every drawing, every measurement anybody could have took in my bathroom was on that drawing. And my permit was approved. That's in June. Okay, July comes. I did that work in my bathroom that I had the permit for. July comes. I file, I put in for another permit to close up four windows that now have foam paneling in them. I want to put half-inch plywood over them. And I was denied the permit. I'm like, okay, well, and they said, well, you're a landlord, you gotta hire a contractor. And I was like, when did this come apart? Where, where are we going with this? And they said, yeah, November of 2022, council said that anymore, if you have an apartment in your house that you rent out, you can't do any work on your house. You have to hire a contractor. Okay? Can I see that law? Everybody was, everybody I was emailing on the the permit to get it was commenting, commenting, commenting. And as soon as I asked for that law, everybody stopped commenting. Took me about four days to get this law. I was told to go on to scrantonpa.gov. Yeah, well, it's not on there. And I, I didn't mean to be smart with the people who I spoke to, but when they tell me it's on there, I'm like, okay, well, you got a computer in front of you. Find it. Put whatever you want to put in the search bar and find that law for me. It got to the point where I went to one part, I was, I went from the permit office to another person on the phone, to another person on the phone, who I didn't get his name, so I'm not gonna bring up the title or the name. But I was like, where can I get this law? It says I can't work on my house. And he's like, I don't know where to tell you to get it, but I could talk to this guy that runs the permit office. I'm like, wait, 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 you are. And then I told him, you know, his, his job title. I'm like, how do you not know where this lies? How could somebody in your position can't tell me where to, I could get this in an email or I could come down and look at it in a book? I could, I just couldn't believe it. So the next day, I got the law. And sure enough, I don't know what you guys did. I can't understand it. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a legal person. But you guys voted on something in November of 2022 that has to do with people working on their houses. And I go to page six and, and the, the whole, the whole, all 19 pages is all titles of different occupations. That's all it is. What the license, and I mean apprentice, supervisors, everything. But on page six, there's one. It says, "Exception. Homeowner. Any natural person engaged in home improvement on a one- or two-unit residential property owned exclusively by them and occupied as their residence shall be allowed to obtain a building permit for and perform such work without being a licensed contractor so long as they meet all of the requirements of City Code, including this chapter, UCC." So I don't have to be a licensed contractor to work on my house. So I would like to get council's opinion. Am I a homeowner or a landlord?
Excuse me. So, Mr. LaFrance, is this a duplex or?
It's the first floor, second floor. I have an apartment on the first floor that I live in right now. It's a two-bedroom unit. My wife, myself, and my two sons, we live in it. We have a two, same, same pattern upstairs, two-bedroom upstairs. I had so many problems on Alder Street. When I left Alder Street, I swore I would never rent again. We get to Maple Street. I want to say maybe in 2013 or 14, but I could only go back to as much as 2015. That apartment has not been rented out since 2015. I showed the city the other day. I came over and I showed them a letter from PP&amp;L. The power usage in that apartment stopped in 2015 and a meter was pulled in 2020.
Okay, so, Mr. LaFrance, your time's up, and I'm not trying to be rude. Would you please leave your name and email with Mrs. Chris, Chris Sakera here?
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Volenberg, could you take special interest in this and get clarification? Because it doesn't sound clear to me with code enforcement and any correspondence that this gentleman has had and see if we can rectify this.
I will. I'll talk with them in the morning.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more thing about that correspondence? I don't mean to take up everybody's time, but does anybody know what the law is on right-to-know requests? How many days, how many months, how many weeks?
Our solicitor isn't here, but there is a process.
Yeah, I can understand that, but five weeks?
I agree.
It's five days. Five-day response unless it involves more investigation, then they would request a 30-day extension.
Yeah, that's what I thought. No, I was told five, when I came over the other day, I come over to City Hall, and I was told five weeks.
Five days and then a 30-day extension if the, the city needs it.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Delmar Gutsievich, Scranton City taxpayer. I'll keep it brief tonight. You guys know who I am. You guys know what I want. I would think it'd be very, very nice to be able to leave my house, walk or bike to a train station, get on a train, take the Laura Line up into Scranton, get off in Scranton, go to work, play, et cetera, and do the reverse. I think it'd be very nice to be able to live in Scranton, go to the train station, get on the train, take it to Old Forge, to Pittston, to Wilkes-Barre, do the same. I've talked endlessly about how this would be beneficial. I think it'd be very nice and I would like it very much. I did also have a question regarding Biden Street because it was brought up tonight. All the streets in, at least in central Scranton, are either plants going one way or people going the other. So why, why is Biden Street on the plant axis and not the people axis? Does anyone know? Okay. I didn't know if you would.
We can find out.
It's been something that's been bothering me ever since it went up. So, thanks. But, yeah, I, you guys know, it'd be really beneficial to the city, to the community, build the train and be able to have localized regional rail in Scranton-Wilkes-Barre metropolitan area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
That have it.
Okay, thank you.
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Smearl, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, one, actually, two. Mr. Volenberg, the, the construction signs up on East Mountain Road, they were done by a, a private construction company. So if you call code enforcement, see who pulled the permit for that, they will be the ones that we should contact to remove their signs if they're complete. I believe they're complete, but the signs are still there.
I'll verify it, sir.
Thank you. Now, the, the 26th running of the Steam Town Marathon was this past Sunday. And it so far has raised over $2 million that they donate to St. Joseph's Center. Also, also benefits the city of Scranton, hotels, restaurants, and businesses. And I'd like to thank our council president and the race director, Bill King, for all the work that he's done in, in this over the past 26 years. And all he has done for the city, bringing that into the city and also the St. Joseph's. That's all I have.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Actually, tonight, all my, all my comments will be made on the, on the items as we, on the question on the items. So, nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
I do. I have a few things to get to. First off, and I meant to discuss it earlier, but feel like now's still an appropriate time to bring it up. Just wanted to mention how saddened I am by the events that took place in Israel over the weekend with the unprovoked attacks from Hamas. I understand that this is a conflict that goes back a very long time, decades. And, you know, I know that it's not something that's going to be solved anytime soon, but I just, I hope that innocent lives are spared and that they don't continue to be taken. Last night, I did attend the vigil that was at the Jewish Community Center. And it was a great way to see the community and people from all faiths come together to show their support for Israel. And I spoke with many people who have family members or friends who are over there. And they're very worried about them. And someone said that there's just nowhere within the country that they could go and, and feel safe. So even though that's, you know, in another part of the world, I feel like it's still concerning to many of our residents and, and people of the Jewish community here within Northeast Pennsylvania. So I did want to make sure to bring that up tonight. Secondly, there are a number of issues, some of which I brought up before, along Prescott Avenue. And many that have been brought forward to me. I also drive that street very often, living in the Hill section. And so I'm able to see these problems as well. One of them has been the disrepair of the street from the work that American Water had done. And I'd asked for updates previously. And that was supposed to be completed by the end of September, early October. So that's where we are now. So I just want to make sure that those are going to be taken care of before the winter and quickly, I hope, because, because they're, they're in pretty bad shape there and the patch job was, was not done well. So I know, I discussed with Mr. Volenberg, reaching out once again for an update.
I will. I'll ask for the completion date. And if not, I'll ask that they repair the pave cuts.
Thank you. And there are a couple of code enforcement issues along that street. One of them being there's an overflowing garbage dumpster. I think this property's been an issue in the past. It's on the corner of Prescott and Olive Street. If we could see if we get code enforcement down there to take care of that.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
And there's an overgrown empty lot that is on Prescott and Vine Street. I believe the southeast corner. And it used to be the entire empty lot that was, that was overgrown. And I think maybe even during American Waters Project or someone was doing construction locally that had, you know, vehicles parked on the lot. And so some of it is not overgrown anymore because there's not grass and weeds, but a good part is still. And if you're coming from one part of Vine Street, it's difficult to see the traffic coming along Prescott Avenue because of the height of them. So if we can see if the owner of that lot can take care of that.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. one more note on that street, the property, I believe it's 423 Prescott Avenue that had a fire. I think this winter, it'll go on two years ago. And that property is still sitting there. And I know that the owner originally stated they were going to renovate that property and still have it be usable. So it wasn't on a demo list. But if we could find, I've asked for updates on this in the past, and I don't remember receiving any recently. So I want to know, and I know the neighbors want to know what's happening with that property, if it's, if it is in fact going to be renovated since the fire they had, or if it needs to be demolished.
I'll ask OECD tomorrow.
Okay. And along those lines, I've also asked for in the past and have not received a list of properties like this one that have had fires and been condemned and just seem to sit there for sometimes years. And it's frustrating to see. And I, you know, I want to make sure that we're staying on top of it as a city and being able to address these properties. And if, you know, if the owner says, okay, we're gonna do something with it. says, okay, we're going to do something with it, you know, that we're not waiting six months to check back in on that. So if we can once again discuss that list between, you know, code enforcement and I know the Fire Department too, because that has to do with some of them that are under the Act, I think it's 59.
I will. I'll see if they could firm up some timeframes.
Okay.
Mr. Voldenberg, did we get a list, didn't we recently get a list of some of these properties? Because I know the one on 1111, Rear Blair Ave, was one that we've talked about. We've talked about the one on just above Tripp Park. Didn't we get a response back on some of those?
We did get some responses. Oh, I'll get you an update. But Rear 1111 is still on the list for demolition.
Yes.
What I'm looking for and hoping that there will be is, you know, just a complete list of what those properties are and then their status of them, if they're condemned, if they're on the demo list, if they're being renovated, so that we can get more and more of those properties taken care of.
I'll take care of it. Thank you.
And on the, along the 700 block of Schultz Court, there's been a chronic garbage issue with garbage being, you know, overflowing from trash cans or not in trash cans at all and being torn into by animals and all spread across Schultz Court. So if we can get our code enforcement officer over there as well.
I will.
Thank you. And I've received a complaint previously about Front Street over in South Side, and there was a lot of overgrown bushes and garbage, mattress, tires. I received updated pictures today, and it's still in that same state. So if, I know there might have been maybe some quality-of-life tickets, but obviously nothing's been taken care of there, so if we can check back in on that property.
I'll have them follow up on that street.
Okay, excellent. And I know Mr. Mancini had come up and asked a question for counsel regarding audit of the sewage and parking authorities, and I know for the complete city audit that we were waiting on the sewage one, and I mean, I think it's very important for us to demand that that gets to us quickly so that the city audit can be completed, but, you know, also in the interest of transparency, I fully believe that we should have those audits. So I'm in agreement with the question that was asked.
We also got a correspondence from the sewer authority saying that they reached out to their auditor, and they will get that, they've asked the auditor, do it as soon as possible and get it to the city.
Yeah, and as soon as possible. Can't come quick enough.
Yep.
And then there was one final point that I had. There was also a quest about the overtime update, which I mentioned, we definitely need an update on that. It is important to me, too, that we are properly tracking overtime of employees, and I've stated that in the past, and I'm hopeful that we'll get an update soon. Certainly want to ask the administration for that again.
That's correct. They're working on implementing a new system similar to the police department.
Okay, so maybe if we could get some dates as to
I will.
when that's going to be implemented, how the implementation is going. Thank you. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. So maybe to clear up with what Mr. Mancini was referring to, I think he's referring to a forensic audit, not the yearly audit or an audit by the auditor general. That's what I think, and I think we asked for that, or I
I'm fine with us asking for it again.
So I believe we asked for that in the past, and we can do that again. Okay? So that's cleared up. So what I'm going to report out is a request that I had sent the past couple of weeks. So I remember last week I asked that if the city is going to honor Attorney Terrence Gallagher's term on the Scranton Housing Authority through September 24. And the response, I'm glad we got it back, and I'm glad we got this one, is the city does not intend to put forth another new appointee for Magistrate Gallagher's position until September of 2024. So we can finally put that one to rest without any more nonsense. All right, so we also sent a request to the city administration on October 5th, asking if the hours of the ladies swim club at the Western Field may please be alternated with the rest of the public at the indoor pool. And this is referring to the vouchers that were issued to the homeless. The response we got back is, "Western Field is a smaller public pool that is only open from 9:00 to 1:00, Monday through Friday, and then again from 3:00 to 6:00, only Thursday and Friday." Even though it's a smaller pool, the pool hosts many activities. Swimmers looking to partake in all sorts of aquatic activities, lap swimming, aerobics, exercise, recreational, et cetera, attend during the above-reference hours on various times and dates. It would be irresponsible of the administration to relinquish more than half of the daily hours availability to a private group that is using a public amenity. Well, they're not, they're a paying group, and so they're paying taxes, and they also pay a fee, a membership fee, so I don't think it's unreasonable for them to have their own time. And also, Director Gasmeyer has spoken to the ladies, and they have agreed to share the public pool. It is Director Gasmeyer's understanding that only a couple of ladies are still frustrated that the city is unable to close the pool for their private swimming group. The use of vouchers is going well. The Keystone Mission voucher usage has trended upwards. August 19, September 29, October 14, and counting. The administration is happy to report that there have been no incidents, disturbances to speak of. All Keystone Mission guests have been respectful and the people, of the people in the facility. They leave the area clean and express their gratitude for the ability to utilize the facility. All right, so then, speaking of condemned properties, I requested through Mr. Voldenberg last week a list of all condemned properties. I know we got a demo list. I don't know how current it is or updated it is, but I requested that, and it's noted here that you sent that request in.
Right, we have not received it as of today.
Thank you. And then we also requested an update to the Briggs Street pipe issue. You know, and it was, will this be repaired, will this repair be included in the Kaiser Valley flood project, or may any necessary repairs be made to the pipe? Because there was great debate last week about this pipe, you know? It contributes to the problem. They changed it out, it was a 24-inch or the 15-inch, so the answer is, I don't know, it's kind of vague. So the answer we got is, the Briggs Street pipe issue was identified. Well, of course, we've all identified it in the Kaiser Valley stormwater study, and will be part of the design for the overall stormwater project in that area. So my concerns is, this project, I mean, it's only in, still in the planning stage, not the construction stage. So how long is that going to take if this pipe can just be remedied sooner than that? Could you follow up with that, saying, why do we have to wait to either reconnect this pipe or reconfigure it to make it, you know, a better experience during a storm up there?
I'll ask those questions.
Thank you. And then with regard to pilots, so so the recipients of a pilot letter, okay? I have the list. It's too lengthy to read, and it's 177 are in receipt of this pilot letter, requesting some help, right? And during caucus, I asked Mr. Voldenberg to please put it in third order. So out of the 177 that received letters asking for, you know, to participate in the pilot program, only seven have participated as of September 25th. Them I can name because there's only a few. The University of Scranton, $150,000. NEPA Youth Shelter, $50,000. Midtown Apartments, $13,000. Boys and Girls Club of Northeastern Pennsylvania, $2,000. Goodwill and North Gerald T. Langen Apartments, $4,524. DCNR, $3,752.92. And the Society for the Preservation of the Triphouse, $200. So we've only gotten or received $173,000 and change. So I know the HUB test is another angle we're looking at, but, you know, seven out of 177, that's disheartening. So like I asked earlier, would you please put this in third order? So you can all take a look at the list and digest this like we're going to try to do. All right?
I will, sir.
And I believe that is all I have.
5B for an introduction and ordinance ratifying the extended local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, for another seven days.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, I'm sorry. The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 5B to sixth and seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance establishing permit parking in the 800 block of Olive Street.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, we discussed this one in caucus, and under the circumstances on this section of the block, I'm in favor of this permit, the parking permits.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with performance high fidelity to perform audiovisual services for the meeting space enhancements in City Hall.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, formerly 5B, reading by title, filed a council number 90, 2023, an ordinance ratifying the extended local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, for another seven days.
You've heard reading by title, item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Terran, I move that six, item 6A, passed by reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, last week I asked Mr. Voldenberg if we can get a list of the emergency actions that were taken by the mayor during the first 14 days of the original declaration. Can we again request a list of those actions that were taken under the first 14 days, as well as adding these additional seven days on to get a list of all the actions that the mayor took for the emergency declaration?
I will. I'll get a break, gentlemen, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 310, 2023, appointment of Teresa Gritano, Ph.D., Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the city of Scranton's Ethics Board for a term of five years. Teresa Gritano, Ph.D.'s term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on August 31st, 2028.
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 311, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Nilton Corporation DBA Guide to provide the city of Scranton's Fire Department with a first responder mental health and wellness mobile application.
What is the recommendation of the vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final vote of item 7B.
On this item
No, we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm second.
Okay, on the question?
On the question, I'm sorry, on this item. We received information this evening in caucus, a lot of information. I didn't know about this, and really, a lot of confusion on payments and stuff on it. So I want to recommend tabling this for further information from the administration.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to table. On the question?
So also on the question, so during the negotiations with the Fire Department, there was a mental health piece that was, I guess, a point of contention with the contract. I did reach out to the Fire Department Union to see if this was something that filled in that void for mental health services with the Fire Department, and I was informed by the union that they felt that this was a waste of money. They trained nine individuals over the last couple of years to be a peer support team, and they felt that the Fire Department would not use this mobile app, as this is a mobile app, for mental health. It was mentioned in public comment tonight that an application would not be a good substitute for actual mental health, and I tend to agree. I am also going to go off the union's recommendation, as they do not endorse or feel that this would be effective if a motion to table tonight occurs and passes. I'll accept that, but even next week, I will be voting no to this. They felt that the $18,000 that may go towards this application may be better suited in training either additional firefighters or getting more support for their peer support team, as this team is actually a team that covers most of the northeast from Pennsylvania to Maine. That's all.
Okay, also on the question. I agree, Mr. Schuster. I had the same conversations with our brave firefighters, and I believe them, that this app, or whatever we want to call it, doesn't replace, or doesn't replace the training that they had or the peer training, that, you know, they probably wouldn't use it, and it would be a waste of money. So I, you know, I listen to them, and I agree with them. So the motion on the floor is to table, but no matter what comes back, I'm probably going to be a no for this. It's just, I don't, I don't agree with the rationale. Okay, so all those
On the question, I'm in agreement to table this tonight. There were a number of questions, good questions, that came up in our caucus that I would also like to find out the answer to before determining my vote on this piece. I don't think that it's a bad thing to have more options for our employees for their mental health, and there have been apps that have been found to be helpful and beneficial in that avenue, and it could be an adjunct to, you know, other services that they might be receiving, but, you know, I didn't have the same conversations with the union or firefighters, and, you know, I think there's a couple of things that we need to look into as to like where this is coming from. There's a question about, you know, why these services also wouldn't be offered to the police and just to the fire, and then along with some questions regarding the cost and the contract, so I'll be in favor to table tonight.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed?
No.
You don't want to table it? You go to no to table?
I was discussing it on the floor here. I was just seeing which way it went. I wasn't sure which way it was going. So I could be a no to table. Yes.
I'm sorry.
I am a no to table, yes.
Okay, so 2-1, it's table. Okay?
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution
3-1-2, I'm sorry.
Resolution number 312, 2023, amending resolution number 69, 2022, a resolution as amended as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials at the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARP accounts to allow for focus and funding of disaster relief efforts and stormwater mitigation, development and remediation of pool complexes within the city, and to effectuate ongoing stewardship of taxpayer dollars.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final vote of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, there's a couple of things included here that I had some discussion about. Ms. Cipriani was in a while back when we discussed our streetscapes, and one of those streetscapes that was included was the Providence Square Streetscape Project. I know there were some questions as to what census tract it fell in, but it was, it was a project that was discussed some, some time ago. In this, in this resolution we have in front of us, we're reallocating money from the North Scranton Providence Square Streetscape Project to take that $2 million and reallocate it towards Biden Street. There are several projects here. One is West Scranton. There's South Scranton. Each part of the city has a streetscape project, and the Providence Square piece is the North Scranton Streetscape Project. There are several streetscapes in downtown Scranton, and I would hate for North Scranton not to get some, some improvements in their section of town. So I would like to make a, a motion to amend item 7C to exclude the reallocation of Streetscape North Scranton Providence Square DI of minus $2 million, as well as the Streetscape Biden plus $2 million. It's item number 17 from the from column and item number 17 on the to column. So that is a motion to amend 7C.
Second.
Second. On the question, also on the question, I also agree that, you know, so for the Streetscape project, that, you know, that was pretty much promised to North Scranton and getting re-diverted for the Biden area, I think it should be equalized throughout the city, since other parts of the city are receiving some of this ARPA money. I think it's only fair that we redistribute it or think, think again about North Scranton. You know, it was in the plan, then it was out of the plan. So I'm in favor of this friendly amendment. Anybody else on the question? So all those in favor of the friendly amendment?
Aye.
Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
7D, formerly 6A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed a council number 90, 2023, ratifying the extended local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9, 2023 for another seven days.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson?
Make a phone call.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson on the Committee of Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, none heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order.
Mr. Mc, I'm sorry, one second. Mr. McAndrew, on 7C, we voted to approve the
Amendment.
Amendment.
Yeah, but I think, I thought we voted.
I think procedurally, let's just go back to 7C.
All right, we'll go back to 7C.
We'll go back to 7.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Could you reread it with the amendment? And then we'll vote out.
Read it again?
Yeah. Just to include the amendment as amended.
For 7C.
Correct.
Correct. 7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 312, 2023, as amended, amending resolution number 69, 2022, a resolution as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials at the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARP accounts to allow for focus and funding of disaster relief efforts and stormwater mitigation, development, and remediation of pool complexes within the city, and to effectuate ongoing stewardship of taxpayer dollars.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C as amended.
Second.
On the question, none heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted as amended.
Eighth order, 8A, filed a council number 64, 2023.
This ordinance is creating overtime reporting requirements for all city departments and employees. It has been tabled until we receive additional information from the administration.
8B, filed a council number 87, 2023.
This ordinance increases the debt proceeds account by $3,790,000. It has been tabled until additional information is received. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting has adjourned.